Good evening and welcome. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2019. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you and thank all of you for attending this evening. We have just adjourned from executive session. We will not be returning to executive session. And we're here tonight, we have a few special presentations. And we're gonna start, Lee, we're gonna do the budget after. We're gonna allow the students to speak first. So we're gonna ask Dr. McDonald, please start with the Writing Revolution.
Thank you very much and thank you everybody for coming out tonight. We are excited periodically at board meetings during some of our workshops to be able to highlight some of the things that we're doing in classrooms and with our students. And this year, we wanted to highlight what's going on in writing. And we thought the best way to do that would be for me not to talk, but for our teachers who are writing liaisons to describe to you what's going on and to have the students share their words about what they've been doing in writing. So I'm just gonna hand it over to our secondary school writing liaisons, Mrs. Kate Arpaia and Ms. Sloan Dill.
Good evening, my name's Kate Arpaia and this is Sloan Dill. And we are the Writing Revolution Liaisons for the 2018-2019 school year for the middle school and high school.
As you can see, we actually chose to set up this page as a Writing Revolution template. So this is one of our strategies that we use, where we use question words to write a summary sentence. So why TWR? Throughout the school day, Takahoe students use the Writing Revolution across content areas to build comprehension skills, stimulate thought, and increase the complexity of their sentence work. And we believe that this program helps the students with multiple strategies to enhance their writing, gives them a lot of critical thinking skills, and it leads to higher achievement and wonderful progress that we've seen over time.
Before we get to our students, we wanted to talk a little bit about how we're supporting staff across content areas. So quarterly, we send out a newsletter to make sure we're communicating with the middle school and high school teachers. Our goal is to ensure vertical alignment from grade six through 12 and across content areas. So this is just an example of one of the newsletters we shared with our staff about one of the really important skills, which is learning how to use keywords and phrases, abbreviations, and symbols for note-taking. So we shared some student examples of work that's being done in the different content areas, along with teacher examples and teacher models.
This here is another valuable resource that is provided by TWR. So this is available to all of our teachers. They have access to customizable templates, they have examples of student work, and they also have the webinars and videos if they need any support in any of the topics. If they don't want to come and protest, they can also come and find the support online. Tonight, we'd like to turn our presentation over to our wonderful students as they are very knowledgeable in the topic. And first, I'd like to introduce Dahliana.
Hello, everyone. My name's Dahliana, and I was new to the district in sixth grade. And over the past three years, my writing has improved very much. And I'm here to show you how it has improved. So in sixth grade, I began to use transition words, and some of my sentences were elaborated. In seventh grade, I began to use participial phrases and appositives. And I started to expand on my elaborations. And now in eighth grade, I began to use conjunctive adverbs. My vocabulary got very sophisticated, and my essays began to flow nicer. And it's really helped me prepare for high school, and it's made me feel very comfortable writing essays independently for English and as well as my other classes.
Just in between, before we have our high school students come, one of the main goals is to make sure that all the content areas are on the same page. So we just are presenting a sample pacing guide that could be used for grades six through 12 that talks about the importance of really starting at the sentence level, building to the single paragraph level, and then to the multi-paragraph level. And it just kind of allows us to be on the same page as a staff and to allow all the content areas to be sharing the same information. So I'm really excited to share with you two high school students and their work, and that is Jessica and Isabella.
Hello, I'm Jessica, and this is my research paper for biology. So our task for this paper was that we were chosen to do a genetic disorder, and I chose hemophilia. So we had to use the Takahoe library database to gain research for our essay to put it into. So I used different research from universities, different articles, and lab experiments from other scientists. And I used them by putting in the paragraphs that we used, and we paraphrased the information. So we also had to use MLA citations, which were given the format by our teachers. And we used this so that we didn't plagiarize and that the author gets credit. So we paraphrased by putting it into our paragraphs and our own words. And we were taught this by our teachers by just getting the quotes and then putting it into our own types of sentences using different transitions and supporting the clauses like Dahliana said. And this helped organize our essays to make them better, and so we got a good grade.
Hello, I'm Isabella, and this is a worksheet for Global Nine Honors. And at the end of each of our lessons, we do the sentences with the question words, and it really helps enhance our sentences. And for the question words, for the dotted lines, we use keywords and phrases in order to organize our work and make it easier to organize it altogether. And this makes it easier to take notes in other classes because we use what we've learned with the Writing Revolution and put it into the other classes as well.
So this is part of our planning page for our English class. So we had to write an essay for our novel. So using the topic sentence, which is on the left, we have to use subordinate clauses and subordinate conjunctions to add our transitions so that the task goes straight to our essay and so that it gives us a base of what we are going to be talking about.
And although this was used in English classes, we are able to use the same formats that we use in English class to apply to our other classes such as math, science, and social studies.
So we'd just like to thank everyone for your time tonight. We are really pleased with all the students' progress. And we're excited to see where writing can take them. And at this time, we'd like to introduce Kelly, who is presenting the Writing Revolution for the elementary school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because we do post these later, they did grab some student testimonials that we're not going to read to you right now, but some thoughts that the students were sharing about what has happened in their writing since they began working with these tools through our partnership with the Writing Revolution. So that's for your future enjoyment. And now we're gonna switch ourselves over. And there we go.
Good evening, everyone. So you'll agree to see a lot of the same things carry over from the elementary schools up to the middle school, which is why this is such a great program to have K through 12. In kindergarten and first and second grade, our students begin with identifying the different sentence types, what makes a sentence, what makes it different from a fragment. As they move up into first grade, they start expanding sentences using conjunctions and sentence expansion with question words. And into second grade, they begin to outline and note-take. Note-taking is one of the biggest things that we work on second, third, fourth, and fifth to get them ready for middle school and high school. In third grade, the biggest focus is outlining and writing single paragraphs, topic sentences, concluding sentences, putting in transition words and illustration words, for example specifically, in particular, so that they can support their thinking with either evidence from the text or evidence from other sources. And then they also begin to work on revising work to make it more detailed and more precise. And fourth and fifth grade, they take what they learned about paragraphs and sentences to make multiple paragraphs with a focus on an introduction and concluding paragraph using a general statement, a specific statement, and a thesis statement. So I have two students who are here tonight, a third grader and a fourth grader, who have pieces that they're going to present to you. And you will hear all of these things within their work. I'd like to invite Emily up right now.
We had to write about a strong woman who we wanted to learn more about, and I chose my mom, Amy Hoffman. I chose her because even though she's in a wheelchair, she can still do many amazing things. First, I interviewed my mom and took notes. Next, I wrote a three-paragraph outline. Then, I wrote three paragraphs. Finally, we were given a few choices to present our project, and I chose to make a video, so here it is.
Amy Hoffman is an amazing woman. She was born on November 1st, 1976, and wrote the one line in the year. Additionally, Amy went to a very nice college, specifically she went to Maryland University to study business, and after graduation, she worked in a work unit. Amy is in a wheelchair, but she has a screen on her monitor, her painter, model, and mom. Finally, she was married to an awesome husband. Particularly, she met her husband Daniel Hoffman when she was 23 years old in Las Vegas and married him on September 22nd later that year. Clearly, Amy Hoffman is an amazing woman. Even though Amy Hoffman is in a wheelchair, she still has many accomplishments. Initially, Amy is a very good fast learner. Secondly, she's married when she was three years old and has been to the university only four months. She raised her first mouse game. In particular, in February, July, on a family tree in Japan, and Amy made the decision to call mouse game. Mouse game is where you sit on a chair balancing on one spin and was anxious to scare. In addition, she is an amazing painter. Specifically, she started painting in 2006, and now her paintings are sold for $250 to $350. Amy used to be a rod beauty model. Particularly, she started modeling when she was 38 to 39 years old. The Rod Beauty was a project in which twenty women with disabilities were photographed by fashion photographers. However, she was a modeling professional when she started in a wheelchair. In conclusion, Amy Hoffman has accomplished many... Amy Hoffman has had many challenges in her life. Amy started having a wheelchair in 2006. Specifically, she had transvestigialitis, which is an inflammation in the spinal cord. Amy was very upset when she first found out, but she decided she should be grateful it's what she has 'cause her arms sore. Additionally, she said those legs went to her arm in her wheelchair. I saw her before she walked down a downhill. Amy got paralyzed when she was doing one injury. She showed her not well and injuries and tingling in her legs, so she needed her husband to go to the hospital. The doctors took an MRI to something, but then x-ray found out that she had an inflammation in her spinal cord. Therefore, Amy Hoffman is truly an amazing woman.
Up next, we have a fourth grader, Maya Sarmah. Come on up.
So we were learning about habitats in science class, and my teacher, Ms. Girardi, assigned us to make an essay about a habitat that provides both our needs and wants, and I chose my bedroom. A habitat provides a person with all their needs. Sometimes, a habitat can also provide a person with some of their wants, too. Regardless, my bedroom provides me with both my needs and wants. For example, my bed is something I need because at night I would sleep on my bed, not the floor. My bed provides me comfort so I can sleep and not be tired in the morning and warmth in the blanket so I don't get cold. Another one of my needs is the desk I have. It helps me concentrate when I'm doing homework or studying. In addition, I like my desk because it helps me organize so I know where things are instead of searching my whole room. One of the wants I have in my room are toys such as paintings, paint, and art canvases. Since I have paintings, paint, and art canvases, I like to draw and sketch during my free time. Another one of my wants are books, math packets, and just work in general. I love to read, it's one of my favorite things to do, so I have lots of books. I also like to be occupied with work, which is why I like math and ELA packets that Ms. Girardi gives me. Even though a habitat provides certain needs, it can also provide many wants such as toys, paintings, and my workbook pages. So here's a picture of my bedroom. So the strategies I used for my paragraph was an introduction paragraph and a concluding paragraph, which had a general statement, a specific statement, and a thesis statement. And the thesis statement included a subordinate conjunction, which is a conjunction that introduces a subordinate clause like therefore or regardless. And for my paragraphs, I used a quick outline with keywords and phrases and transition words to elaborate on the paragraphs.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
I love this night. Okay. All right, so we are moving on to G O, correct? So I'm just gonna get to your presentation. Ms. Marielle Ferguson is here with us tonight with a bunch of her students from, I believe, we're starting with the middle school, right? Student Government Organization? And I'll hand it over to you.
Correct, all right. Hello, everyone. So I'm the G O advisor in the middle school. And basically, this year, when I started at the middle school, I started to have some conversations first to kind of get a feel of, you know, the direction that the middle schoolers wanted to like go in. And what I had found was, they really were tired of the old way of doing things. And they felt like it was time for a change. They didn't really feel like their voices were being properly represented with the old kind of system of governing. So they wanted to try something completely new. And so that's basically what we did. So the first step that we took was...
In our first couple of meetings, we decided that it was necessary to create a vision statement before we continued with the G O. We envision the Takahoe Middle School as a place where every student feels they have a voice, is valued, and accepted. We wish to foster a progressive environment in collaboration with teachers and administrators that is positive, fun, healthy, and productive. All students should feel that they have a right to pursue their goals and while respecting and supporting those of their peers.
Okay. Sorry. Do you wanna go forward? Yes, we'll just use the front max, okay?
Not only did we have a vision statement for our Takahoe Middle School, but we needed something that could guide us to make sure that we had a mission and somewhere we could head forward to. So the mission of the Takahoe Middle School G O is to improve the overall atmosphere of our school through the communication of ideas between students, teachers, and administrators. The Takahoe Middle School G O will actively seek out opinions, feedback, and suggestions from the members of its student body in order to provide a school where the students thrive, grow, and feel a sense of mutual respect.
Step two, creating a student survey. The survey included questions that helped us understand what the student body wants for their school and their overall experience here.
So we took a survey to accumulate ideas throughout the student body because we wanted to make sure that everybody would be satisfied with like the events we came up with. So we basically sent out a survey to everyone, and we made our decisions based on our responses to create a middle school fun night, which was last week. And yeah.
All right, so step three was in creating a brand-new constitution. And then this is where a lot of the real work came into play. Because the students knew that they wanted their voices heard. They knew they wanted something different. But now they had to kind of step out of the, you know, box that they had been in. And they had to say, well, what is this gonna look like, right? So this is where the creation of the student constitution came in.
So before we even set up the constitution, we had to set down bylaws for the G O itself. So in the previous G O, there were elections and four people would be elected, and anyone else could contribute. But we decided to change that a little bit. And in the G O now, anyone can join. And the student government is a nonprofit organization and will organize the student body for the good of T N S. And for leadership, a House Speaker will be the voice of the T N S G O. Each committee will have an elected leader per committee, and there will be no elections for committee members. A House Speaker and committee leaders will be elected within the committee membership. The government is divided into five committees: Legislative, Environmental, Arts and Recreation, Events, Public Relations. And we don't have this committee right now, but in the future, we are going to create a Take Action Committee. We meet weekly during lunch, and we have from October until today, unless otherwise noted.
Going back to the idea of committees, in our bylaws, we had set up that we have five different committees. And so far, the four that we currently have are the Legislative and Policy-Making Committee, the Public Relations Committee, also is known as P R, the Environmental Committee, and the Arts, Recreation, and Events Committee. So this is the committee Mary and I are currently in, the Legislative Committee. We have, along with others, created the Student Rights and Responsibilities, and we defend the student rights and responsibilities if violated. We create, debate, and vote on, while otherwise approve amendments which are briefed by the student body, usually via Google Form. Based on voting, we go by majority rules. However, concessions must be made to those who feel strongly against a decision if in question. Now, I would like to tell everybody here to ask themselves, what do we want to enhance further that we like about our school? Where can we do better, and what is better anyway? What features do we want for our school community that do not exist now? These are the questions that we have needed to ask ourselves to set up the rights and responsibilities of our school constitution. We have started it, we're working on it currently, it's getting there. And we have mentioned different things such as the right to petition, the right to a safe environment. We're trying to make sure that everybody's opinions and voices can be heard to make this fair for everybody.
So I'm in the Arts and Recreation Committee. So basically, what we strive to do is just to encourage arts and creativity. We also like to make forms above public invites for the government to approve. We work with the P R Committee a lot if needed, and the entire government should look into events that need to be fully approved. We like to make sure that everyone can have an equal say. So I'd like to talk about the game night that we just recently had. So we had refreshments that was run by Karen and Pilar. And we had asked various different clubs in the middle school if they'd like to use that as an opportunity to raise money for their own group. And it's whatever they would need. So the activities that we did were Gaga Ball, some backyard games that a student in the G O, Lauren, had brought. We did relay races that another student, Nico, had brought. We did trivia that Emily and her team from TASC had helped out with. And we also had karaoke that we had the portable smartboards to help out with. We also had Maya and Amanda work on flyers to put around the school, which of course was very beautiful and was part of Arts and Rec. So it took place in our gym and cafeteria. And we wanted to make sure that the cafeteria was an activity space, not just a place where you could sit down and have some refreshment, but also somewhere where you were still having fun while doing the night. We had the two separate zones. We tried to make it so that it was like 45 minutes in each zone. And we separated it a little bit by grade, but it wasn't very strict. We had one exit and entrance, which was the front of the school, to make the traffic easy. And we had many people in the G O guiding the people as they went through. We also wanted to make sure that we had a head count of who or how many people were coming. So we had Lauren make an R C P survey that was also on a Google Form. And these are some pictures that we took throughout the night. So Karen and I created the idea to have bake-offs where students brought in desserts. And the dessert that was most voted for won the competition. Karen and I took it into our own hands to fundraise for our eighth grade graduation dinner and have enjoyed bringing students together for a fun lunch period.
Pilar and I have worked hard on bringing these events to life. We have collaborated with other groups and have had meetings with the principal to make sure the bake-offs can happen. We want to plan many more of these events to ensure the eighth grade graduation dinner will be at the best it can be. Considering our late start, we are doing very well, but we still need more money.
We have recently brought up the idea of a food drive, and we are hoping to have one in June, and that will be our next project.
Therefore, we are proud of ourselves since we have founded these bake-offs and put them all together on our own. We hope to inspire fellow students to be independent as well. Thank you.
So I am presenting for the Public Relations Committee?
Okay. So the Public Relations Committee is something general. It's literally the name. It's the people who relate to the public. They ask the public around. They keep the student body informed of the decisions of the student government. And they make sure that the student body has a say and can offer ideas when necessary. We provide a newsletter and also create Google Forms, surveys, and publicized rules or events if necessary for other committees. They're also planning to form the Take Action Committee in the 2019-2020 school year.
We, this year, have started a newsletter, which is very exciting because this is a new feature of our school. We are featuring student poetry, important events and announcements, and very important information that our fellow students and peers should know.
Hi, I'm Jane Sheldon. And I am on the Environmental Committee of the Student Government. On the Environmental Committee, we create the environmental standards and goals, and we see that T N S meets them. Also, we pursue them by setting an annual initiative. And we enforce the standards by presenting those initiatives to the student body. And we use clear and reasonable guidelines. If necessary, we'll work with other committees to enforce and make the student body aware of our environmental initiatives. This is how we expand the Environmental Committee and foster peer leadership. This is basically initiative number one. In the spirit of Earth Day, which was in April, and to promote long-term environmental change, Nico Tortorella, who's on our P R Committee, and myself, representing the Environmental Committee, we asked fourth and fifth grade Connell students to participate in an environmental panel. We will meet with this environmental panel regularly to kind of keep up on what we're doing to combine both schools' initiatives for the Environmental Committee. And a new environmental initiative, initiative number two, is zero waste. Zero waste is... Zero waste is like this recycling program, which obviously you can see, it's recycling compost and garbage and it's to cut down on as much garbage as possible. The compost especially works quite well because there's actually many things that you can compost that many people wouldn't expect. And every piece of waste that we recycle is one less that will be in our environment for the next two-hundred thousand years. We hope to, we hope to, we hope to make people aware of the dire situation that our environment is in and encourage them to make the world a better place. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to our initiatives and thank you.
Okay, so, that brings us to zero waste. Thank you. Yeah, all right. So, as the middle school representative was saying, we would love to get zero waste into the Takahoe School District. It's a fabulous program. So, basically how this happens is, I also advise the Science Olympiad and the middle school, Scarsdale Middle School, has the zero waste program there. And all the students said, wow, Mrs. Ferguson, like the cafeterias, they look so nice, you know? And we started asking around and we found out why and it's because they have this initiative that is going on in that school. And we did a little investigating and we actually got Scarsdale to come in and work with us to bring it here. So, the first full month at Scarsdale Middle School, four thousand pounds of food scraps and compostable products were sent to the compost facility. All right? So, they doubled their recycling. The school used to put out five dumpsters of trash in a day and it's already been cut in half. So, the program is now in all seven Scarsdale schools, so they did start in the elementary school and then they worked their way up. So, our G O members brought a few Coddle school members also and we actually went to the Scarsdale Public School to actually see this program in action. And with us, we had a party crew. You might recognize some of the people in the picture. So, we had our superintendent, Mr. Carl Albano, and we had our president, our board president, Mrs. Lissio. I was also present and the head custodian, Mr. Tammy Wynette, Mr. John Morash from Coddle, and Mr. Gregory Stiefel, they were all on board. We were all there, it was fantastic. And basically, we discovered what zero waste is. You basically want to reduce whatever you need, right? Then you want to reuse it, okay? And then you want to send as little as possible to be recycled and compost whatever else you can. So, this is what it looks like in a school setting. Mr. Ron Schulhoff has been fantastic. He's helped us every step of the way. He actually did come to our school as well to talk out the program and how it would look at Coddle. So, he explained the components. And first, all receptacles are color-coded with lids, they're grouped together and labeled. Now, the labels are changed according to the school. So, then, we would go around and we'd see what the kids typically eat and use in our school and those are the pictures that we would take and then that would actually be placed on the sign. So, the things that are up there are typically what they have found in that particular school. Then, the other thing is, those beautiful signs, they categorize and visualize what to toss into the receptacles. So, this is the compost one, right? And it really just looks clean, it's very efficient. And the kids, like while we were there, we even saw them looking at the pictures, really like making a decision about where they had to put, you know, their items. All the receptacles and signs are color-coded. So, yellow means recycle, the green is the compost, and then the gray is the trash. And I love the color coding because wherever the students are, those colors represent the same thing throughout the building. So, it's not just in the cafeteria. The, believe it or not, the utensils are also compostable. So, that fork is actually made out of corn. And the plastic bags that are part of the compost, those are also made out of corn. So, those can all go into the compost, which is fantastic. So, everything except for that little item over there, which we actually don't use because we actually have containers for like ketchup and for dressings. So, all of those items go in there. Now, in the classroom, if you look at the picture on the right, that's currently what our classrooms look like right now, right? We really don't have any clear sense of recycle, right? It's kind of just together and in some of the classrooms, it's not together. So, if you look at the picture on the left, look at how nice and clean and organized that is. You've got compost, you've got cans and bottles, you've got waste, it's all labeled, it's all identified, very, very clean, I think, for, you know, a classroom setting. So, that is also part of the program. So, it's not just in the cafeteria, it's also in the classrooms. I think this sets a precedent for the students, right? Because it kind of gives them a sense of just, you know, social responsibility for their environment. It gives them a sense of like feeling good about themselves because every time they're doing the right thing, they're feeling good about themselves because they know that they just did the right thing. So, I think that those are, you know, additional valuable things that come with this program. So, the setup are the bins, the serveware, and then the compost recycling pickup, which we already talked about. There's a spreadsheet that actually has been created by Ron, which I've shared with Lillu. And actually, we're going to share these with all the members of the board. And this is basically the rollout. So, the initial rollout isn't just that we're going to put everything out there and then the kids figure it out. So, there's going to be like a huge launch, right? And it's a big zero-waste assembly. And, you know, our middle school G O is actually working on getting the kids excited right now about, you know, environmental initiatives. So, by the time zero waste comes, those kids are already going to be in that mindset, right? So, we're going to have this fun zero-waste assembly, we're going to create awareness, we're going to explain the zero-waste philosophy, and then we'll show students what we are going to do and how we are going to do it. So, what does it look like in our building, okay? So, in the cafeteria for the first few weeks, we're going to have parent volunteers and they'll assist the students to work on their muscle memory. So, Ron kept talking about this muscle memory. And if you work it out the first week or so, the kids will just kind of start to instinctively know where things go. Our G O members from the middle school will be part of this. They're going to kind of step back and watch and then eventually they'll help facilitate it and then it'll just keep carrying on. Now, we get the recycle rangers. So, now there's more leadership opportunities for the younger students because they'll be recycle rangers and they're going to actually have little badges and they're going to facilitate the whole thing in the cafeteria. So, it's really like a nice, long process where there's all of these possibilities for students throughout, you know? And we've expanded the Environmental Committee by peer leadership opportunities, right? Which is what we talked about, what Jane talked about. And hopefully, this will lead to student actions. So, student action is when a student takes the initiative to, you know, inform and to, you know, create an awareness and to want to actually roll out an initiative. So, hopefully, we get some of these student actions, you know, that will come from the students and, you know, and that will be additional leadership opportunities. And thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much. That is the end of our student presentation portion and due to the fact that it's after eight and some people are probably pretty tired, we're going to just take a moment, if that's all right, and let our students exit if they need to. Say again? Oh, absolutely, guys, pause, hold on a second. Let the board come back up front, they'd like to address you first before you go. Thank you. Okay, just wanted to take a minute before the students leave to thank you honestly from the bottom of our hearts for being here tonight. What you're doing tonight is so important because you are the voice now of your initiatives, of showing the community all your hard work. And what we do here as a board is we have to make investment decisions. We have to decide what is important and what's not as important. So, in order to have the writing revolution, in order to have a G O committee in the middle school, we have to support that. We just put together a budget that we adopted at our last meeting and that's our budget that defines all of these programs. And both of these programs that were presented tonight are there. And I'm so happy that you're here tonight to show our community why they're there and how great they are. So, I want to thank you. I want to thank the teachers who came tonight because for them to come here tonight on their time away from their families, to show our community their work and their pride in you, I just think that's amazing and how lucky we are to have them. Dr. McDonald said she loves this tonight and I really love this too. I mean, all of you, really for being here because it's just a reminder why we all work so hard and what we're doing here, especially having just adopted our budget that will be up for a vote on May twenty-first. I think this is just so important to show our community our hard work. So, thank you for being here and thank you for being the voice of your school and the voice of your work and your efforts. It's really just so important. Thank you, thank you.
I think this has been probably the biggest turnout we've ever had. So, really, if you could come every meeting, I think that would be great and I think we might get more people to actually come. So, really fantastic job. And parents, you have to be so proud.
Just very, very impressive, extremely impressive. It's awesome to see. Thank you very much.
I will just say to each and every one of our students who presented this evening, you were outstanding. Your literacy, your writing, and our student government representatives, I couldn't be more proud. And none of this would happen, of course, without the teachers and I appreciate our teachers being here as Ms. Lissio pointed out. Your work day in and day out really shows through what our students presented this evening and we are just so proud of you. Keep up the great work and we'd love to have you back in the near future. Dr. McDonald, thank you for providing the leadership and our principals in the back, thank you for the leadership to support these programs as well. Great job.
Thank you.
Now, we'll just take a quick moment for the students to go home. And Mr. Kilgallen are here tonight to talk about the fifth grade departmental model.
Thank you, Mrs. Lissio. Good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I'd just like to say that even though Mother Nature didn't provide all the mothers out there the day they truly deserve, I hope every mother out there had a wonderful Mother's Day yesterday, even though we were all cooped up inside dealing with the rain and chilly weather. I would like to start off by speaking of some benefits of departmentalization. The perceived benefits that I will present this evening have been collected through sample studies, research from site visits, as well as collaboration from our P P L T members and educators. Benefits. I'd like everyone to take a second and read down the bullets for our benefits for our students as well as our teachers. Take a few seconds to read those. First, teachers who specialize in one area of core content are able to increase their own knowledge and proficiency in that content and thereby increase students' proficiency. This specialization has often led to increased test scores as well as academic achievement. Research also indicates that this is particularly true in mathematics. A Columbia Research study indicated departmentalization may not only provide an immediate increase in the mathematical proficiency of students, but evidence also suggests that it may provide an increase in mathematical proficiency for students for years to come, benefiting them throughout the rest of their lives. Students will now have more teachers who know them and care about them every day instead of just one classroom teacher. Teachers have the opportunity to share their observations and most importantly, share the different approaches they have used to reach individual students successfully. In effect, a struggling student has a team of teachers working together to help him or her. Anecdotal observations and academic studies indicate that behavior problems also decrease under departmentalization. Students gain organizational skills as they learn how to keep track of assignments for multiple teachers and gain confidence that they can handle the transition to middle school. A study among fifth graders concluded that a vast majority prefer the departmental environment once they were exposed to it. Our teachers will receive targeted professional development based on subject matter to address and upgrade skills. Furthermore, studies have shown that while departmentalization increases number of students a specialized teacher teaches, this does not adversely affect assessment or pedagogy. In fact, the teachers found they had more time to prepare lessons with depth in their core area as they no longer had to attend meetings for other subjects or prepare materials and lessons for other subjects. Findings revealed in an upper elementary grade, teacher preference for departmentalized instructional model over the self-contained model due to more focused and quality instruction in specific subject areas and increased self-efficacy. Before I hand it over to John, I'd just like to share my personal thoughts on the departmental model as a parent and educator. I am very excited for next year going this model and working with John. We've put a lot of time and effort into this. As a parent, and as a parent of a middle schooler, I truly feel that this model would have helped my son prepare himself a little better for middle school and the transition that our fifth graders going to sixth graders have to face in the early months of the school year. And also, as a father of a fourth grader going into fifth grade, I'm very excited for next year and what comes next year. John and I have put a lot of, John and I and the team at Coddle have put a lot of time and effort into this and we are very excited and cannot wait to get started next year in September. And at this point, I'd like to call Mr. Morash up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. Okay. So, first of all, I do want to thank Mr. Kay for his wonderful presentation, of course, his continued support and hard work as we continue to move forward through this brand-new model for next year. So, I'm going to start off talking about preparations and the preparations that we put into this new model. Plans have been discussed and developed since last October, October of 2018. In an ongoing effort to include opinions from all stakeholders, P P L T members provided parent and community input in all of the meetings held over the last six months. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of those P P L T members that put in many meetings of brainstorming and troubleshooting and just continued collaboration as we continue to work towards this great model. Teachers, administrators, and members of central office also made site visits to area schools that have implemented departmentalization to gather third-party viewpoint as... schools that have implemented departmentalization to gather third-party viewpoint as to viability. I can't speak enough about how beneficial this was. Fortunately, we are not the first school or the first district to go in this direction of departmentalization in grade five, so these site visits were extremely informative. We heard about hurdles that other schools had to jump over, barriers that they ran into that informed us to create a different model or the correct model and make sure that we were going to present that model correctly and have a smooth rollout. We created a flexible master schedule, and I have to say that that master schedule was created in collaboration with our Director of Special Education, our Director of Athletics, TTA Union Representatives, classroom teachers, as well as, of course, building-level administration. Okay, so it is my understanding that there was a previous attempt at departmentalization at Cottle School and that that attempt at departmentalization was based on pace. So my understanding is that approximately four to five years ago, there was a departmental model that was put in place. So when fifth-grade students went to math class, some students went to one or two math classes, other ones went to difference, where they covered the same curriculum, but the classes moved, one or two classes moved at a faster pace than the other classes. That is not the departmental model that we are rolling out next year, and I think that will become more clear as I continue on through the presentation. Lastly, in preparation, grade-five teachers are extremely enthusiastic, and they are very excited and fully on board, and I thank them for their continued hard work and collaboration as we go in this direction. Okay. How departmentalization is going to work at Cottle next year? We will be implementing a partial departmental model. Students will be assigned to a homeroom, but they will move throughout the day to different classrooms for the core subjects. So I want to stress at this point that the fourth-grade students are not going from the current self-contained model that they have right now to four or five different teachers. Okay? They've had that self-contained experience from kindergarten. What they're getting is from self-contained, they're going to two teachers for the core subject areas. It's a nice step to take at Cottle, their home base, before they make that jump to middle school. Essentially, the grade will be broken up into two teams with half the grade level and two teachers on each team. On each team, the teachers will split the core subject areas. So look at it as two teams of teachers. For example, on Team A, Teacher One will teach math and science, and Teacher Two will teach E.L.A. and social studies. Students will follow a schedule each day and every day, and every student will have a copy of his or her own schedule for easy reference. There will be eight periods in the day, including core subjects, specials, lunch and recess, and the win period, the "what I need" period, which is another initiative for next year that's not just grade five, it's for K-5, and I'll elaborate on that a little bit as we move along. Okay. Don't get overwhelmed by what you see on the screen right now, all right? And forgive me in advance, I'm going to go slowly through this so I can best clearly explain and get the best understanding of what we're looking at for next year. So please remember what I said before about teams of teachers. Team A, Teacher One teaches math and science; Teacher Two teaches E.L.A. and social studies. On the board, you have 5-F, homeroom sample student schedule, and 5-CG, homeroom sample student schedule. Think of those two teachers as Team A, Teacher One and Two. 5-F, Mr. Fusco, is the math and science teacher; 5-CG is Ms. Gorsy, and she is the E.L.A. and social studies teacher. If you look at the very, very first period, the 8:30 to 8:36 period, across the board, that's the HR or homeroom period. Now I know, it seems like six minutes is not a lot of time for the kids to come in, unpack, and get ready for first period, but trust me, once they get into their routines, six minutes will be more than enough time to come in, unpack, and put in their lunch order, once those routines are in place. 8:38, first period begins. Just looking at Mondays, Mr. Fusco's students have E.L.A. first period; Ms. Gorsy's students have math first period. Mr. Fusco is the math teacher; Ms. Gorsy is the E.L.A. teacher. So the students will travel to the other teacher's room for those subject areas. And again, we're not talking a marathon distance, they're traveling across the hall. That said, it is a very important movement break, and these are several movement breaks that are built into the schedule every day. You'll also see the schedule reflects, E.L.A. and math will be taught in 90-minute blocks every day. Okay? So going back to Monday, that takes us through period two. Okay? Period two, Ms. Gorsy's students, who are finishing up math in Ms. Fusco's room, and Mr. Fusco's students, who are finishing up E.L.A. in Ms. Gorsy's room, have the opposite subject next. So Ms. Gorsy's students are going to travel from Mr. Fusco's room back to their homeroom for E.L.A., and then Mr. Fusco's students are going to travel back to their homeroom for math with Mr. Fusco. I got a little technical there, but there'll be an opportunity for questions later and again in June. Now, they move into period three. Again, math and E.L.A. are 90-minute blocks, but each day, period three, the math period or E.L.A. period that pairs up with period three and period five, is broken up by the specials. Okay? But they still receive 90 minutes every day. So, period four, every day, will be the specials period for the grade-five students. But an added bonus to the departmental model is these are not only specials periods, these are team specials. So again, don't forget, when I was talking before, you're talking about teams of teachers. When I talk about team specials, you have to think of them as teams of students. Okay? So when it comes to fourth period every day, for example, Mr. Fusco will say, third period ends around 10:57, so around 10:55, Mr. Fusco is going to say, "If you are on Team Tuckahoe, please stand up and make your way to the Innovation Lab for STEAM." Approximately six students from Mr. Fusco's room will stand up and travel to the Innovation Lab. Approximately six students from each of the other three fifth-grade rooms will stand up if they are on Team Tuckahoe at 10:55 and travel to the Innovation Lab. Immediately following that, Mr. Fusco will say, "If you are on Team Tigers, please stand up and head to the Music Room." The students will then, if you're there on Team Tigers, will do that. The same thing will happen in the other three rooms. Similar for Team Cottle, those will go to library, and finally, Team Cubs, the remaining approximately six students in each room, will stand up and travel to the Art Room for that special. This is an incredible opportunity for continued social-emotional growth. If John, if John is not in a homeroom with his best buddy James, odds are, he's going to have a special every day with his best buddy James. Or if John has never been, is not in a homeroom, has never been in a self-contained class since kindergarten with Harry, this is a great opportunity for John to get to know Harry before they go to middle school. Excellent opportunity for social-emotional growth, aligned perfectly with our strategic plan. Okay. Specials period, team specials period. Fourth period ends, students travel back to the rooms that they were in for fifth period for the second half of their 90-minute block of math or E.L.A. Fifth period ends, students move to lunch for sixth period lunch and recess. Students come back from lunch and recess, and they go right into the win period. So the win period is seventh period every day for fifth-grade students. The win period, again, stands for "what I need." It is the "what I need" period. So it is a period where we are very strategically creating structured schedules for the learning specialists where, and again, the win is K-5 initiative, but just speaking to fifth grade right now. If a student needs to be pulled for reading comprehension services, AIS E.L.A., AIS Math, speech counseling, OT, PT, those students will be pulled for those services during the win period. An additional change for next year is band and strings will be offered during the win periods. That is going to preserve instruction in the classrooms. Right now, students are pulled from an E.L.A. lesson, or a math lesson, or a science lesson. In this model, they will be pulled during the win period because band and strings will run simultaneously every day during the win period. What this does is ensures small group instruction back in the classrooms. It's an opportunity for the classroom teachers to deliver academic intervention services in the classrooms for those students that would benefit from it, or it's an opportunity for enrichment. So we have a built-in enrichment period back in the classrooms once a day for all students. At the end of seventh period, students return from band string services, whole classes are put back together again. I'm going to go back to Monday specifically for eighth period. If you look at Mr. Fusco's, his class would have physical education, eighth period. That is not a team special. That's a homeroom special. The homeroom goes to physical education. Ms. Gorsy's homeroom, because that's that team, they have social studies that period. On the flip side, if you jump to Thursday, eighth period, you'll see that Ms. Gorsy's homeroom special is PE, eighth period Thursday, so Mr. Fusco's class will have science with Mr. Fusco. The remaining eighth periods are a flex period of social studies and science. The reason for that is a lot of social studies curriculum overlaps with E.L.A. So there are times when, or many times, where social studies content can be covered during E.L.A. If we find that we're in a unit that week where that is happening, then we will devote more of that time to science. Likewise, we are bringing in the new STEAM teacher and new STEAM curriculum next year. So a lot of the science that is done in the classroom is going to cross over with what's happening in the STEAM lab, and those two programs are going to overlap with each other. So there'll be a lot of collaboration with the science teachers and the STEAM teacher. So it depends on the unit of study for that week. Nuts and bolts, the students will not have lockers. However, we are currently exploring chair pockets to be placed on the backs of chairs where students coming in from another homeroom can store their materials while in another classroom. So I can honestly say that, you know, in talking with the fifth-grade teachers last week, we finalized that detail, we are going to go with the chair pockets. The detail we're still discussing is whether or not the chair pockets will remain on the backs of the chairs and not move, or whether the students will travel with their chair pockets. A minor detail that we will certainly have ironed out by the time we roll out the model next year. The first day of school is going to look very different for grade five. It's really going to be more of an orientation day. The students will travel down to the auditorium for an assembly led by Mr. Kay and myself, where they will receive a lot of the information, they'll get it in their summer mailing, they'll be exposed to their schedules and things like that, but that first day of school, we're going to talk to the fifth graders about that. And we're going to clearly explain expectations for the fifth graders for next year. The students will travel back to their homerooms, and all of that will be echoed by their homeroom teachers. Certainly, that first day of school, they will have an opportunity to travel to the other teacher on the team that is not their homeroom teacher. So Mr. Fusco's students will travel to Ms. Gorsy to learn about E.L.A. content, expectations for the year, talk about materials, and of course, schedules and routines will constantly be reviewed that first day of school. As always, placement will be a very careful collaborative process among teachers, school psychologists, learning specialists, and administration to create carefully balanced and heterogenously mixed classes. I want to stress that no homerooms will be created to be a faster-paced homeroom than other homerooms. They are going to be carefully balanced, heterogenously mixed classes. I want to invite Dr. McDonald up, who's going to talk a little bit about professional development and common planning time as related to departmentalization. Thank you, Dr. McDonald.
So one of the things that Mr. Morash and I have been talking about are what opportunities does this provide for us to work in a more specialized fashion with our teachers, and what opportunities does this provide for them to work together? And one of the things that can happen is CPT is Common Planning Time. So the grade level of teachers will have the same period per day when all the kids are off with another teacher, the specials, right? And in the past, they would need to take that time and work with each other and talk about all the content areas. Well, now, we have half as many to talk about, right? So you, in essence, double your co-planning and prep time just during the day, even without me being involved, by saying, "You know what? We only need to talk about English and social studies because the other two are over there talking about math, math and science." It also allows them to have time to talk about the children during that time, which we see as a huge model of teaming at the middle school level, that they, since they share students now, they say, "Okay, well, we got, looks like we got science mapped out for the next couple of weeks. Let's talk about how this kid's with you in the morning versus me in the afternoon. What are we learning? How do we help this child? Let's see who we need to talk to, who do we get working on." Another thing that we get to do under this model that is harder under our old model is to get everybody more in-depth training in a particular content. So in the past, one teacher from the grade level would go, let's say, to a social studies conference, and then they'd have to get that out to all the people on the team. Now, I could potentially send both teachers of social studies, and then everybody who teaches it went, and the rest are still back in the building. I didn't have to send the whole grade level because they don't all have to go to the same training. And so they've already started working on that with me, saying, "And what about this?" The people who are doing initial social studies, and I have been in conversations this week, really thinking about the power of this model allows us to be much more thoughtful about social studies because it's kind of gotten a little short-stick on timing because it doesn't have any state tests, and it doesn't have as deep of a curriculum. It's not daily, it doesn't have to be done daily to complete the standards on the grade level. And already been thinking about, then, what do we want to do with it? Mr. Morash mentioned that they do a lot of it in English. So what are we going to do with that last period in the day, and how are we going to make those decisions about social studies and science time because they do not need to be done daily to cover the curriculum? But all of these teachers have taught this curriculum before. They're teaching all four right now. So it's not a curricular piece that is new to any of them. What it is, is an opportunity to really get deeper and think, "Well, where else can I go with it?" I don't just have to feel, sometimes we get to a coverage place sometimes, and we're like, "Ooh, I got a lot of things I got to cover," and they don't need to feel it. You know what? I got a little more time to do a little more prep on this particular topic. Let me think about how the students were doing. And they've already been reaching out to me in that exciting way, and it's going to be good work.
Thank you very much, Dr. McDonald. And just some final thoughts and observations, also based on some what I had heard at a previous Board of Education meeting, and just, I wanted to clarify a few items. Grade-five teachers have always understood, followed, and will continue to follow all of the New York State learning standards in all subjects. What changes with departmental is not curriculum, but how the curriculum is delivered. And I do want to stress that, I know everyone knows this, but the Cottle teachers are an incredible, incredible group of people. They are phenomenal educators, and they have always differentiated their lessons. And I'm happy to say with the win period, it allows an opportunity for even more individualized instruction. And this is just a sample of the, well, these are the sample studies that we researched that Mr. Kay had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation where a lot of our benefits came from, also in partnership with those site visits and professional conversations. I do want to take another opportunity to thank our Director of Special Education, our Director of Athletics, Dr. McDonald, Mr. Albano, for their continued support since October as we have, as we started to, you know, outline this model, and really, it has come to be an amazing, an amazing model. We're ready to go. We're excited. And to that end, I want to especially thank again the fifth-grade teachers for their continued enthusiasm, hard work, and support as we move in this direction for next year. We're all very excited about it, and great things on the horizon. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morash and Mr. Kilgallin. Did anybody on the board want to ask a question or a comment on the presentation?
Well, I just wanted to say that it was very well thought out. It looks like you really thought out what that process will look like, which I think is important. I'm excited about it. I wish my kids, although... I wish my kids, although they're in going into 8th grade and 11th grade, I wish they had that opportunity because I think it would have made a difference going into middle school. So it's very exciting. Look forward to seeing it. I like that WIN thing, too. It's very good.
Yeah, no, I love the WIN thing. I think that was one thing that I thought was something that we could have improved on, it'd be great, because oftentimes, we were pulling students out of a special, out of an important ELA or math or science because they were receiving specials of some sort. So it's great to see that we're making that change. That's, that's exciting, and I think that's definitely will benefit the children.
Yeah, well, well done. Very well presented. Thank you very much. Couple of quick questions, though. How will parent-teacher conferences work? Will, will the parents meet with both teachers, or just a homeroom teacher?
So there's, there's two different models that can work for that. What we're going to, what we're planning to next year is, yes, team, team meetings. So you meet with both teachers. That's what we're thinking about right now. And those site visits that we went on, you know, the model that seems to be in place is the homeroom teacher reports out on all subject areas. We're going to see if we can do the team approach first.
So that's for grading as well? So the homeroom teacher, how, how would grading work?
Each teacher would be responsible for their own, their own grading, teaching the curriculum, administering assessments, things like that. But when it comes to parent-teacher conferences, those two days, we're going to try to do the team approach where parents can come in and meet with both teachers. However, the model that we see most frequently practiced is the homeroom teaching reports out on both. So if we do it that way, what we would do is we would have, for example, going back to my slides, Mr. Fusco would meet with his homeroom and report out about math, science, ELA, and social studies. And then the second parent-teacher conference, Mr. Fusco's homeroom would meet with Ms. Gorsy to talk about ELA, social studies, math, and science.
Okay.
Okay? And I just want to take an opportunity to, to add that we are going to send home a newsletter on June 10th to all COTL parents, further outlining these changes and the details from band and strings, departmentalization, WIN, as well as a few other changes. And then we're also going to have a PTA-sponsored coffee with the WEC administration on June 13th, I believe it's at 9:00, where we will present very similarly to what we did today and do a Q and A. Also, 7:30 at night on June 13th, we will have a Q and A with WEC administration as well.
One more question for you. For movement, when those six kids or so are told to stand up and move, they move together? Is it sort of like a organized movement, or is it a little more?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. I meant to address that before. So like I said, you know, to start, Mr. Fusco might say, Team Tuckahoe, stand up, please head to the Innovation Lab at this time.
Right.
Okay? The other three teachers will do the same for their Team Tuckahoe. And then immediately following, we'll do that each time. We're going to have strategically placed aids and monitors in the hallways to assist the students, especially early on, to make sure they're getting to, from their, their rooms to their specials rooms in a timely and of course, very appropriate manner. So we're, we're looking into that. Absolutely, we will have that in place. And, you know, the staggering of the departure of the groups from the rooms is part of that structured approach.
Okay. Very good.
I actually love the idea that you did that, that so that other kids could sort of socialize with different kids and not just be with the same group of kids the whole entire day.
Absolutely.
Out of curiosity, I'm just curious.
Yep.
How did you pick the teach, the teachers, did you decide which subjects they wanted to specialize in, or did you kind of, was it kind of collaborative?
Completely collaborative. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was discussed, discussed for quite some time, but when it came down to it, you know, it, it came down to a very strategic approach to who would be teaching what, based on certain, you know, of course, that is comfort, there's, there's based training in the past, who is, may have received a little bit more training in reading strategies, things like that. But in the end, it was collaborative, and the 5th grade teachers are very excited about it.
Cool.
I like, Mr. Marash, that you said that the communication is going to go out K through 5.
Correct.
Because I think it's important that all the parents at COTL know what the changes are going to be in the 5th grade, because obviously, they're going to be curious and they're going to want to know.
Absolutely.
And I was just curious, what site visits, where did you go? To what schools?
Oh, boy. Well, we went to Pleasantville Middle School, and they had just implemented departmentalization in their grade 5 this year. So they're in their first year of implementation. So that was really educational. And then we went to...
Glenville Elementary.
Glenville Elementary in Greenwich, Connecticut. They're in their 5th year.
Yeah, they, they departmentalized 4th and 5th grade.
4th and 5th grade.
4th and 5th.
Yeah. Yeah. So they were well into their departmental model. So again, it was very educational.
And I think it's, it's good that you emphasized that there isn't going to be a change in the curriculum, because I think that was a concern, the thought that it was going to be new and different and a lot to adjust to. And also, I think the assumption that there would be some type of, I know it's an old term, but I use, of tracking, you know, where students are. I know years ago, when my kids were, they only moved for math, and it was known then who was in each class, and, you know, and I don't think that does well for students' confidence, and, and it kind of stops the inability, I think, to advance. I think it's always good to be surrounded by, you know, everyone's working to lift themselves up and not to stay in the same place. So I think it's really good that you cleared that up, because I think that was a misconception that students would be somehow tracked by their abilities, and I'm happy to hear that that's not the case. Was there anything else, Carl? Was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just want to thank John and Pete, and of course, our central office administrators. I know there have been many, many months and many long hours of thoughtful planning. I applaud you. I know getting the teachers on board early and the PPLT committee on board early was an important first step. Your research was thorough, and from someone who many years ago taught in a 5th grade departmental model, I, I have only positive to, to, to say from my personal experience in teaching in this model, and I have every confidence that it's going to be a huge success. So I thank you for coming here, taking the time. I'm sure you'll have effective communication with, with the COTL parents.
Absolutely.
And again, thank you for your hard work.
Yeah. Thank you for your support, and thank you to all the members of the board for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the community that does have a question. There will be another opportunity. I believe Mr. Marash said June 10th, is there going to be a grade level meeting to discuss it as well? And if anyone wanted to ask a question at this time or had a comment? I'm just going to ask before, any comments from the public, like, not, again, I just want to remind, nothing specific to your own child or other students, because, you know, we can't discuss that here like one-on-one. So if there are one-on-one specific concerns about your child, or those would have to be addressed, you know, in the appropriate ways. Go ahead.
All right. Teraz Gardier, 114 Parkview Drive. I actually have a couple of questions. My first question is, I think that the departmentalized model is definitely something to be excited about. I think it gives the kids opportunity to start preparing for middle school, changing classrooms, being responsible, organization, and all of that executive functioning thing that is sometimes lacking and hard to adjust to. So I think that's all great, and I'm glad to hear that the, that the 5th grade teachers are also excited, and that's great. My concern still lies with the fact that we are increasing the class size significantly in doing this, departmentalization, and where the research is to support increasing the class size and departmentalizing at the same time. I saw the research presented tonight. It's good to know that research is being done. Just quickly, sitting here in my Google, searching, one of the papers cited is a dissertation, so it's not a peer-reviewed type of research. So I'd like to hear what the other support is for these decisions. And my second question is, we talked about that the children will move, oh geez, to the, makes me think this doesn't work, to the STEAM classroom, and, which I believe doesn't exist, and there is a space issue, and to the art classroom, and I believe art is on the cart. So where is that going to be exactly?
That's a good question. This is what I'm going to... You got it. Did you want to add something, Carl?
I'll wait for John, and then I'll follow up.
Okay. So I'm just going to start off by saying that departmentalization, and, and thank you very much for your questions, Ms. Gardier. Departmentalization is not dependent upon any certain class size or number of sections. The departmental model can be implemented and will be successful in four sections or five, three sections or six. So I just wanted to, to put that out there. In terms of STEAM, very good question, and art, STEAM, yes, will be on cart. But when it comes to that 4th period team special, we are going to have a fixed location for the STEAM class until the Innovation Lab is ready for 5th grade for that 4th period team special. Same thing for art. There will be a fixed location for the students, that team special, they're traveling to art, they will go to one location that has been worked out. And then I, I didn't know if you wanted to address anything else, Carl.
Sure. With regards to the class size, Ms. Gardier, I found no research combining increasing class size at the same time as a district would implement a departmental model in an elementary school. I could not come across any research. More specifically, with regards to class size, I would agree, last time you were here, you did mention there's research that supports smaller class size, and I'm very familiar with a lot of that research, particularly at the primary grades. There's a lot of research that really points to trying to maintain small class size, and I think as a district, we've tried to follow that, that philosophy and, and maintain that, although there have been years where enrollment surges have caused us to have higher grades than we would be comfortable with in the primary levels. Right now, the increase that you questioned would be roughly 18 or 19 students per class now in five sections, moving next year to four sections with roughly 23 or 24 per section. There is no research that would support increasing a class size by four or five students is beneficial. But there is the fiscal reality of, of running a district, and I also did some research as far as looking at districts throughout Westchester, as well as their current class enrollments in grade 5. And, and what I found is that even in some of the highest performing school districts across the county, having low to mid 20s is very typical in grade 5. We've also come across a few policies that exist, not too many districts have policies. But again, the policies would support class sizes in that low to mid 20s range for 5th grade. That may be something that the board would like to consider, you know, down the road. You know, a policy is something that, that we could do, but that would be looking globally at the district K-12. But again, the research is not there to support the increase. I think everyone here would love to maintain classes across the board in the teens, but I just don't see that as a realistic option at this time.
Anybody else? Well, I was just going to add one thing, because I guess also, if you did that for one grade, you would have to do that for all. So I think then it starts getting into this situation. I think the enrollment will continue to increase, and that could present a huge problem.
Hi, Lori Charles for Team Wall Street. Good evening, everybody. Happy to late Mother's Day to all of our moms out there. So there were a few things that I wanted to ask about and make some comments on. The first was, who was on the PPTL, or whatever the acronym, acronym is for that, and how were they selected?
I could answer that. The PPLT committee is, they're PTA representatives, so the representatives, I believe, needed to go through an application process. Our PTA leadership is not here, or they could explain that, but there is an application process, and then the PTA tells us, you know, which representatives are assigned to each building. It's a two-year commitment, so there's continuity. And I believe COTL has three parent PPLT reps, as well as teachers and administrat, uh, two.
Four.
Four? Okay. I stand corrected. Four parent reps, teacher reps, administration, and maybe a support staff as well, or no?
I don't think we have a support staff representative.
Okay.
Two teachers.
But that is the...
Mary Ellen Ferguson.
Okay. Special area teacher. That's the makeup, Ms. Charles.
So thank you for that. Here's the problem with that. There are many people in the community that are parents that are not involved in the day-to-day activity of PTA. And I can speak for myself, I'm not one of those parents. Certainly, I support PTA in certain endeavors, but when you're making a decision like this in order to have a really truly collaborative process and involvement that considers all stakeholders and different disciplines and perspectives, I think that that should have been something that should have been open to the community. And when I say community, I mean all parents, not just to a PTA. That, that's just not my thing. So that right there is concerning, because then it appears, the Bible says, shun the appearance of every evil. So it appears that people are hand-selected, selected that might co-sign some of the things that are decisions that are being made. People, you know, that may not challenge, who may not be able to come in with a laser focus and understanding the intricacies of such changes. And as I said earlier, as a teacher, that's my whole career has been, I too have taught in a departmentalized model. I told you that I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I'm opposed to it being done this year during the process of so much change and upheaval in our district. And I don't care what anyone says here, having built two homes, no project ends on time. It just doesn't. There's so many things that can happen. And to have those kind of, you know, the undertaking of buildings and renovations in addition to changes in model is a lot to take on. I wish that our new elementary school principal, after having only been here a month or two, came in and just decided, oh, this model needs to change for 5th grade. I wish he had taken a little bit more time to get to know the community at large, not just PTA and the few people that serve on PTA, but all stakeholders. And I think that we should have been involved in that process, to be quite honest. I didn't even know that this was going on until maybe about six, seven weeks ago. That's a problem. That really is. Because I'm not the only one. And certainly, this affects the 4th graders moving into 5th grade, but it doesn't only affect next year, it affects years to come. And as we know, we have homes for sale, we have families that will be moving in, and certainly that will impact the number of students that will be involved in class. Now, having been here in this community now for seven years, moving into eight, we have had several initiatives, changes, decisions, and that sort of thing that have come in, and they sound terrific. They're awesome. I've been on for them. However, implementation is key. And once again, after a month or two, a decision was made in October, he's new, he just got here with full board support in, in a couple of months of being here, and a determination and support for a model to change with great at this time, I think is, is questionable. It really does, and it just speaks to, once again, sort of leaving people out and not being as transparent as you should be as a board. Board members, you represent all of us, you do, not just PTA or a few people here and they're handpicking who. No, you represent the community. That means everyone, whether they are general ed, special ed, whatever kind of ed. You, you, you're supposed to represent everybody, and questions need to be asked when you have principals that come in, and after just a couple of months here, decide things like this. What I would have rather he had done, and I, this is nothing personal to you, and I, please don't take it away, that way, I'm talking about history here, and I think I said this at the last board meeting, we've had lofty things that we've come in, you know, wanted to have into play. Chromebooks, great idea, but was the rollout implementation done well? No, it wasn't. Teachers did not have the professional development that they needed to have had in order to be able to incorporate that into learning on a daily basis and teaching. That did not happen. I can think of a few more things, and this is one of it. It sounds great. When I first came here, one of the reasons why I put my kids here, I did a tour, because I was that interested. I did a tour with the superintendent at that time, and they had reading and writers workshop. I saw evidence of that from Columbia. You certainly had a program and a partnership with Columbia at the time. However, once my kids got there, I haven't talked that, because I've been well-trained in both, both of those... in both of those weight models of teaching literacy. And there was evidence of that. I saw the level books, I saw the teachers, whatever, but were your teachers doing it? No, they weren't. They were not doing it. When I talked to the teachers of which my kid has had, they were like, we don't have time, we can't do it, it's kind of hard, we can't do it. It was not being done. You had evidence of that, but implementation was not there. Since then, again, you talk about a ninety-minute block, you should have a ninety-minute block in K to five. You should already, and research says that in order to really make an impact on literacy learning for young children, you should have at least a ninety-minute block, at least. That should already be happening in K, one, two, three, four, and five. So to say, you know, oh, now we're going to have a ninety-minute block in fifth grade, and ooh, that's exciting, well, I would challenge that, because you should already be doing that. That's number one.
I believe it is already.
Great. Now, what is being done with that? Movement should be happening in a ninety-minute block, whether you're in a self-contained classroom or a departmentalized situation. That comes down to execution of teaching strategies, differentiation. That is not happening. When my kid comes home, this is true from the time she was in kindergarten here, honey, tell me, did your teachers pull you back for group today? No. Did you work in centers today? No. When I go to meet with teachers for parent conferences, every last single one of them were not pulling kids back for guided reading instruction, small group instruction, response to intervention, which should be done by a specialized and well-trained teacher, not a power professional. No disrespect for my power professionals, but it should be done, that kind of poignant, straightforward instruction should be done by, sorry, by your trained teachers. And so these are things that should already be in place, and they're not happening. I'm concerned about implementation. It sounds wonderful. It sounds like there was some planning, but I don't know that I can trust that. I think that we need to do a better job in this community when we get new administrators to come in and build relationship and build trust, and that there should be transparency to those changes and decisions being made. You know, I'm hearing this, and oh, this is up for discussion, but it sounds like it's already written in stone that this is what we're doing. That's what you're saying. I have a real problem with that. I really, really do, Carl and Michelle and everybody on this board. We can't just go around co-signing stuff because it sounds good. We need to be asking those questions. You cannot handpick people and not open up things for two, more than one person, okay? And so now I'm going to look at your K to two program. When I looked at New York State, and certainly not all students take the state standards, I would have preferred the principal had come in and really looked deeply at your K to two program. You have students, no matter what the subgroup was, you didn't have eighty-five percent passage of students who were proficient in ELA, not even eighty-five percent. And some of those subgroups was twenty-nine percent. And so I would have rathered that there would have been a look at K to two, because that's the foundation. So that by the time the kids get to third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade, they are prepared and ready for such a model, such a model that requires some level of, what would I say, some level of independence, some levels of maturity that would certainly be sort of the groundwork laid in K to two. So those are some of the things that I wish that there maybe could have been a focus on. And people out there, we need to stop milling around with our eyes wide shut. You may think that I'm aggressive, but I'm aggressive for your students, for their learning. I care. I'm an educator myself, and I've done most of these models. I've been around the block, I'm seasoned. I'm not a new mom, been at this for a while, and educator. And so I understand the intricacies of all of this. And so it doesn't just affect next year, it affects year after year after year. And we can't let the cow out of the barn and say, well, if those numbers, which is what you just said, if those numbers increase, I guess that's what we'll have to think about. No, we can't think about it after the fact. We need to be thinking about that now, because this community is growing. There's more buildings going up, there's more families moving in, and certainly when that happens, there will be more students coming in. So we can't be thinking about this after the fact. Carl, I said to you last meeting, sorry, I have a tickle in my throat, I said to you last meeting that I was concerned about whether or not this was a way to justify getting rid of one section for fifth grade, for the lack of a better word, because it seems to fit nicely into a departmentalized model with two teams of teachers.
And the answer to that is no. The departmental model could work with four sections, five sections. It wasn't the reason, it wasn't the reason behind it. More of a debate, I think I mentioned last meeting, was looking at one of the primary grade levels that was a similar size. We did lean towards maintaining five sections in one of the lower grades. And again, the research supports that. So that was the debate going on internally with the admin team and the staff. You know, I think we landed in the right place. You know, I respectfully disagree with your concern that this was rushed or, you know, done too soon. I do believe it will be successful. I've seen the work, I've been at the meetings with the admin team. It wasn't designed in a vacuum, I assure you. And of course, yes, we're always looking for inclusion. The more parents, the better. I will, you know, give some more thought to those comments, and maybe it's a discussion we can have and continue.
I'd like to respond to a couple of things, because considering I was one of that went through that application process before I became a board member, so I don't believe it was handpicked, it was put out there to the community. I applied for the position and was chosen. When I became a board member, I had to decline that seat. But that was not the case, so I just wanted to put that out there, because it was not a handpicked process. People actually applied for those positions. The other thing that I wanted to clarify, that you had mentioned that the board is sort of like hiding this from the community, when you heard about it, we heard about it.
Well, that's problematic, if you're hearing about it when I'm hearing about it. This is a big model change.
I believe probably what was done, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was that a lot of time went into researching it to see if it was something that they wanted to even consider. So from looking at it tonight, I feel like that probably was the reason. So, you know, we were not trying to hide anything, and we do speak for the community. And as an educator myself, I do feel that it is a well-thought-out plan and something that will be successful. I do not think that twenty-three students is a lot, considering my kids went through with twenty-nine. Would I have loved to stay at the fourteen when my son first started? That would have been wonderful. But I think, like we said up here, there is the thing of, fiscally, we can't maintain it. So I think it's something that, when you're looking, which classes can you keep lower? Which can, I think it's a juggling act every year, and probably will continue to be. There was one other thing that I would like to mention with all of the, it was change. I am a big proponent of change. I was excited tonight to see three new things that are happening. I wish, my kids are in tenth grade now, going into eleventh and going into eighth. I wish this, a lot of these changes would have happened before, because I came in as a parent, as an educator, wanting to see some of these things happen, and I felt it took way too long to happen. So I'm excited about those three things, and that things are kind of happening. I do agree that, yes, would it have been nice for, to know a little bit about that change ahead of time? That probably would be something I agree with. Like, it would have been nice to know that it was a thought that might be happening. I agree with that.
So that there could be meaningful conversation and discussion and challenge to tease out all of the things that go along with that? Absolutely.
Yeah.
And as far as the PPTL, again, maybe that was what came out to you, and maybe you had an understanding, because you were involved in PTA at some point or another, but for many of us in the community...
No, it was just something that if you were interested in applying for this position, it goes out to...
Right. And so there you have it. Most people don't even know about it, and don't know what it means or what it entails. No one really knows. And I know you think that they do, but I'm telling you that they don't. They really don't.
I'm going to actually agree with Ms. Gerald on that, on the PPLT. It's not, and I just want to be clear, it's not a board policy of the way it's set up. So for you to say, you know, the board, the board, that is not what the board, the board did not put that together. I was actually very happy to hear that there were four parents, because I, when it first started, I believed there were two parents. So I'm happy to hear that there were four parents. But I do think we could do better. I do think we could do better in an outreach for more participation in that. And I do think that should be something that should be looked at, the model of the PPLT. I am not in any way trying to say that we don't appreciate the work of the PTA or using the PTA as a resource in order to attract parents to volunteer. Of course, we would, that's a great vehicle to go to, is to the PTA. But I would have to agree that I do think that we can go further than that. And so maybe it is something that the board does need to look at in terms of policy of how the PPLT is set up, or to look at different models of the PPLT. I think we could always do something better. And if there is a way to have a better outreach and a broader representation, I am all for that. So I do think that is something that we should look at. I do want to also touch on something that you have said, and I also agree with, which is, I think, a part of the concern is that of trust, because there has been change in leadership in the building. And when you ask, what is it that the board, what is our role? Our role was to raise our hand for Mr. Marash. So we have to have trust in that, that we made a good decision. And like Cynthia said, I'm actually really excited about what he's presenting to us. And that is why he's presenting tonight. He's here to present to the Board of Education, really, that's what our meeting is, and to tell us what's happening. I find it exciting. I thought it was really great to hear that the fifth-grade staff is excited. Though, that is the word, that's what we want to hear as a board. We want to hear excitement. And I think it's just very hard, and I heard everything that was said at the last meeting about the experience of this particular class when they came in into kindergarten, and that was a different administration at that time. And we can't change that. There's nothing we can do now to go back and change or fix, or to reassure and say everything's good. It is exactly what you said. We have to build that. You have to build that. And I think that, you know, what we have to do as a board is we have to give our support to Mr. Marash and let him build those relationships with the Cottle families. That is what we have to do. Well, I understand, but you are being heard, and I hear you. And I'm not saying we can always do something better, but I do feel that it was well-researched. And, you know, I feel like what we can do as a board is support the initiative and the work that he's trying to do. I think that he wants what we all want, and it's what's best for the fifth-grade class. So that's what we have to believe in. You know, I don't believe that Mr. Marash or any, you know, any of the administrators would put in something into place that they did not believe would be successful. So I think we really have to kind of get behind that right now. And everything that you've said, I'm hearing you. I am not, I do think we can do a better job in communicating what we're doing, when we're doing it, before we're doing it, while we're doing it. It is something that has always been lacking. But again, we have a new building leader, and I think we have to give him that opportunity now to do his job. So again, I hear you, and I think there's a lot of improvements that also can be made. I do agree.
Allison Haller in 115 Middleton Place. I just want to first say thank you, Mr. Marash, for the presentation, and Mr. Phil Gallen. Departmentalization of fifth grade, I believe, is going to be great. I'm super excited about it. The plan that was put forward tonight is even better than the one that we worked on as a PPLT member. I am a member of the Cottle PPLT. I have been a member of the Cottle PPLT for the last two years. On it, I am one of the four parents. It is made up of a K-one parent, two, 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 three parents, and one, four, or five. I am the four, five representative of it. And the way I'm going to speak for the recruitment of the PPLT, because I was the PTA president when we created the PPLT, it was an initiative that both Carl and myself kind of put forward. And it was something that we followed from the Aardsley School District. They had it in place, and we followed their model. The recruitment for the PPLT members went out to the entire district. There were emails sent out by the Board of Educate, by the administration, and by the PTA school bay emails. There was an application, a Google form that needed to be filled out. They came back to an executive committee, the community school relations committee. They reviewed all of the applications and decided who would be on the PPLT. We were very, very diligent in making sure that we did not pick PTA executive board members. We purposely picked people outside of the PTA executive board, parents who were not on any committee, to be part of the PPLT. Giving, the purpose giving, parents who do not have that level of interest, an opportunity to still have a voice within the school. That was the whole part of it. So someone like yourself would have been picked or considered over someone who was on the PTA executive board. And I know that, because at the time, I was the head of that, for that. In that PPLT meeting, I did bring up the concern of larger class sizes. I had very similar comments to what Ms. Gardere's situation was. We discussed it. When it was discussed, I asked the two fourth-grade teachers in the room and the assistant principal what their opinion was. They assured me it was going to be okay. And as a parent rep, as a parent of a child in that grade, I decided I had to go with that. They are there, I am not. They're the ones who can say whether or not they feel this class can handle it. And I trust them, and I have to trust them. They're the building-level administration. Would I love smaller class sizes? Absolutely. My oldest daughter, who is in college, graduated from Tucker High School, we've been here since kindergarten, she had sixteen, seventeen in the class. Those were dream days, they were great. But I'll tell you right now, my middle two, my ninth grader and my sixth grader, they had classes of twenty-six. My sixth grader had twenty-six in her fourth-grade class. They have a great class, there's no problem. My children are not left behind. My oldest child and my youngest child, they have learning differences, they have issues. Their teachers are behind them, they handle them. We have our meetings, they tell us what we need. My middle two are bright, they have always been encouraged to reach that extra level by their teachers. I do feel that the Cottle teachers do do what needs to be done for each child. We have a fantastic new principal. The ideas that he has brought to the table have made the PPLT parents really excited about him being here for our community. And I really support everything that he's doing.
Thank you, Allison, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Anything else?
I have another question I would like to ask. Again, PPTL, that didn't get out to everybody, including me. And again, when you're selecting people, you know, makes me concerned. So I'll leave that there. As for professional development with this model, in order to get deep instruction and deep-level thinking, what does that PD look like? Because it sounds like they're going to be learning as they go, and how to dig deep into teaching those core subjects. And so that's concerning, because when my district, former district, moved into a departmentalized model, that was something that PD was done the whole year before, the actual implementation, so that the teachers were really ready, and they had already started, you know, composing the lessons, getting those interdisciplinary pieces put in there, project-based learning opportunities, inquiry-based, that was a process. It almost takes me back to the days when inquiry science came into, with the science kids. There was big-time professional development that went into that, should have been a whole year before. So now you're talking about implementing or doing professional development as they go. That's concerning. So what does that look like?
The thing that a little confuses me with that is that they've been teaching these things all along. No one's teaching anything they haven't taught before. No one's teaching anything they haven't taught before. So our professional development plan has always been, been going on. They've just had to do more topics. And so now the time they would spend on that, we can now find different choices. They didn't have the time this year. They still had to teach all four this year. Um, and so that's the big shift, is instead of saying, alright, we need to find time to sit down and do English with all of you, social studies with all of you, math and science with all of you, we can now recapture that time and say, alright, well now where can we go? So can I bring in a math consultant to work with them? If they now have more time for it, yes, I can do that. I did that when we did some changes to do math labs about five years ago in sixth grade cause we had a new thing we were doing and we did that. Um, so none of this content is new to these teachers. We're excited about the opportunity for them to learn each half as much as they've done before to a different depth. And that does start this summer. They've already put in for summer curriculum projects. We're already looking at different social studies, um, opportunities because, as I mentioned before, that was one that, that they felt needed more work at this time. But they've had to do all the content this year, so there has not been that time slot available that will be available next year.
I speak to differentiation. They're not doing it now. It's primarily whole group instruction happening in your K-5 program. How's that gonna look different?
Well, there, there is differentiation, so I am gonna have to take issue with that. Um, and so, so that is also not something that's new, um, to, to this team.
When I say differentiation, what do you mean by differentiation? What does that look like to you?
Is this a conversation that the board wishes to have at this time? I'm happy to continue with you if you'd like that.
You should have it. This day talks about differentiation. He said that in his presentation. You should wanna know about that, what that looks like.
Okay, to, I mean, are we gonna? Do you, do you? Because it's not unique to the fifth grade model. So we, we can move on to other topics if you, if you'd like. Carl?
At your, at your meeting, we do have, I will say this, we do have, at next month's workshop, we do have Judy Wilson coming in to roll out the, the strategic plan for the district, which will cover many of these topics. It'll, PD is one of our goals, contemporary learning. Uh, so I think it would probably be more appropriate to have some Q and A after the strategic plan. And that is the only thing on the agenda for the June 3rd meeting, I believe it is. Let me double check the calendar.
Is that Judy?
Judy Wilson.
Judy Wilson is our consultant.
Consultant for the strategic plan. And that meeting is June 3rd.
Let me just double check. June 3rd at 7:30. And it'll be dedicated exclusively for the strategic plan for the next eighteen months.
Would you like to address it then, or? Yes. Okay. And also, anything else, Ms., Lori, I'm gonna say, if you have anything, any other things that you want to, um, put together, questions you may wanna have for Ms. Wilson before she comes, um, on June 3rd, and anything else that you might have for Ellen, we'd be more than happy to address it. But I think that, um, to get into the real specifics that you're asking for, which are all very important and we all agree, um, I'm not sure that this is really gonna be the best place for us to do it right now, tonight. And again, Mr. Marash said that on June 10th, it was June 10th, correct?
June 10th. The newsletter, June 13th.
June 13th, I'm sorry. I think I said June 10th earlier. So June 13th is, is the grade level meeting for all fifth grade parents? Is that what it is?
Anybody.
Oh, okay. So it's an open meeting? Okay. All right, very good.
And there's two of them.
One in the morning and night.
Okay, you may wanna say this.
One in the morning and one at, at night.
On the same day? On June 13th? Okay, very good. Okay. Um, where are we now?
Policy.
Okay, we're gonna move on with our meeting tonight, which is, we have number three is discussion on policy 1500, facilities use. Thank you all for coming tonight. I guess that facilities use kinda bored everybody, right? That's a, that cleared the room. Okay. Okay, so, um, we did wanna do some more policy work this year, um, and we find ourselves now, here it is May, and we do have before us a discussion on policy 1500, which is facilities use. Cynthia and Pete are our, uh, policy committee, so do you wanna discuss the changes that are being proposed and maybe what, um, the highlights of those changes are?
Absolutely, yep. So we'll do that. Um, so yeah, so policy 1500 was the first one that Cynthia and I took on. And, um, just to give a quick overview of the process, we, um, we met, obviously initially, RNI and reviewed it ourselves, and then we sat down and met with, um, with Lillu and, um, and Austin Goldberg to, um, get their input and their feedback on what they thought could be improved about this policy and, and what changes we should, we should make. And we had that discussion and then we, um, uh, kinda summarized what we wanted to change about it and then engaged with our lawyer, um, the attorney, to help us draft those, um, those changes and put together some, some different language. And then we just circulated that back around to the same people and did, did a process a couple of times and, and came up with what we have here tonight, which is still a little bit of a work in progress. I think we'll probably make some, some additional little changes to it. But really, it's not changing all that much, quite frankly. It's just basically upgrading it a little bit, tweaking it a little bit. Um, just, I'll give you a quick little overview of what we, what suggest, main suggested changes that we're looking to make. Um, one is just evening out. We have, um, in the current policy, we have, um, start times for the weekend for the, for the, um, high school field. We're going to apply that to also all fields in the district, which really just includes the, uh, Cottle field. So it's just kinda leveling that out. Um, we have some language in there now about the need for non-for-profit organizations to provide proof of their tax status in order to qualify for that, for that status. Um, we, um, we talked about putting some teeth behind, um, the rules of use that we're going to, that, um, this, or it has, you, you use the, um, code of conduct as a guideline now. We're gonna ask that they create some more defined rules, um, for use of our facilities, things like how to treat the facility, litter, things of that nature. And then we're gonna put some teeth behind that in the policy that if those rules are violated, that has per policy, whoever violates those rules excessively could lose their rights to, to using the facility further. Um, the main, the main thing that we probably tried to accomplish here, the main change or addition, was trying to, um, give some more clarity and some more definition to, um, which groups can use our facilities essentially for free. So, um, you know, we, if, if a outside organization wants to use our facility, like an adult basketball league, which has happened, they pay a fee in order to use our facilities. Um, and then there are many organizations that are not school organizations, that are community organizations, that our kids participate in, that use the facilities. And generally speaking, we don't charge them. Um, but the policy wasn't really clear on that. Rec, rec groups, um, Cub Scouts, girl, I don't think Girl Scouts, I don't think they use us. Um, PTA, obviously. Um, so all those organizations that are, that are not directly school organizations, um, but they are related to what our kids do. Um, so the old policy or the existing policy basically leaves, leaves who gets charged or who doesn't get charged up to the discretion of the superintendent. Um, while we, we value discretion, I think it's important to have discretion, we think, we felt that in this area, just due to perception, it would be better to define, um, you know, what organizations or types of organizations, um, get to use our school facilities essentially for free and which don't. And we didn't obviously list the organizations. We wanna keep it flexible. We just sort of defined them. And we kinda used, uh, four main criteria to define them. And they were community-based organizations where the participants are primarily Tuckahoe students, organizations who, whose purpose is to further educate or enhance either academically, socially, or emotionally, the development of Tuckahoe students, organizations that promote community service or leadership amongst our students, and athletic organizations that cooperate with and/or support our district's athletic programs. Things like feeder, athletic feeder programs that feed into our, our, eventually our middle school varsity sports. So those were the four sort of criteria, very generic, but yet specific enough, I think, that it, it offers some, some clarity as to who gets the, the privilege of using our, our facilities essentially for free. I say essentially because if they wanna use a facility during times where there's no custodian, they have to pay for the custodian fee, which was always the case anyway. Um, and then other than that, the other changes were mostly, um, stylistic changes. Our, our attorney, uh, took the opportunity to make some formatting changes and some, some different language changes. Um, I think we clarified some procedural stuff as well with submissions and how the submissions would be made. So more kinda housekeeping type stuff, nothing really of all, of all that much substance. And then a recent addition that we talked about tonight was, um, just clarifying also that in that use of facilities for free, we would make sure we included, um, organizations that were directly being used by our children. Stuff like the Halloween party that we usually have and the PTA, um, functions, making sure that those are covered as well and those are protected as well in terms of free use. So we added some language in there about that as well. So that's pretty much, pretty much it. It's, it's, you know, I would say eighty percent the same, maybe even more than that, I would say. It's mostly the same policy, just, we think upgraded and meant to be a little more, give a little more clarity in terms of who gets to use the facilities for free. So happy to discuss this any further if anybody wants to.
I'm just asking the timeline. So our next meeting is May 21st. So at that meeting, will you have the version that will be up for adoption at that time?
Yeah.
Okay, and then that would be the first reading? So you'll have it then?
Yeah.
And then, um, so this is just sort of a?
Yeah. It's pretty much, it's like coming into this week, we kinda thought it was done, but then we had this recent, uh, tweaking to do.
So on May 21st, we'll have the first reading?
Yeah.
So there'll be time for any, that's, that's why we have a, a couple of readings so that we can have public input. We put it up on the website. Um, we're not gonna do that now because it's, it's?
It needs to be finalized.
It needs to be finalized. So we could put up, I mean, all of our policies are on board docs and anyone can see what they are. And this is, um, I believe 1500, right? 1500.
1500, public use of school facilities.
Right. If anyone has any comments and anything they'd like to add or any concerns or think there's something that in the policy is not being covered, I think we should give the, uh, community an opportunity even now if they wanna put up something, um, before we, um, have the first reading on May 21st. So we can do that.
Yes.
Okay, was anyone else? Cynthia, was there anything you wanted to add to Pete's?
No, I think that was covered.
Okay. All right, so May 21st, we'll have the first reading.
May 21st, have the first reading of the draft and it'll be posted on the website if anybody wants to take a look at it. Um, and yeah, we'll welcome your feedback if you have any, anything else you think needs to be changed, brings to our attention, and we'll consider it.
Great.
Yep.
The next item we have is actually more policy discussion about some additional policy. And we added that because we were talking tonight about, um, the amendments to policy 1500. And there were a couple of, um, pol, uh, policies that either exist or do not exist and things that had come to the attention of the board over the past few weeks and actually had come up in the past. And, um, because we do have a committee, Pete and Cynthia, um, they are going to be looking into, um, two policies. One is a, a new policy, which would be on tutoring. Tutoring, and it then also covers, um, coaching and instructional, um, what, what was the language? We did look at, at some policies already. Um, but it's, it's, it's broader than just teacher tutoring. It, it would also include coaching. So that is something that we're gonna be looking at. We do not currently have a policy on that. So that was gonna, that's gonna involve some research, but first and foremost in our, when we adopt new policy, what we do is we will be talking to, um, everybody involved. So the TTA, the Athletic, Athletic Director, and feedback and how it's, um, should or should not be implemented. If we will even decide on a policy, that's gonna be up for discussion as well. But, um, it's something that some, um, concerns have come to the board. It's not something there's policy for, so therefore we cannot address it. So we think it's worthy looking into. And when we have seen that surrounding districts do have policy, then we think it's something that maybe, um, we are lacking and should be looking into. Um, the other was, um, we currently do have a policy on, um, it's actually, did I give it to you? Do you have the number there?
Yeah, I do.
I gave it to the committee chair on policy.
It's here. Just give me one second, I'll find it. I've got too many papers over here.
I do, I have it.
There you go. Forty-seven forty?
Yes. Policy forty-seven forty, which is, um, it's headed, as it is right now, um, honor roles. And we wanted to take a little deeper look into that. Um, and this includes programs that may include honor roles, honor societies, and special awards. So we do have a policy right now, forty-seven forty, and we're gonna be looking into that also because concerns regarding that have also come to the board's attention and cannot be, um, addressed in the current policy. So we're gonna be looking at that. And that's it for tonight.
Just one more.
Do you have another policy?
No, no, just one more thing.
Oh, our budget, yeah. Tonight is our budget hearing, yes. Oh, Lee, you see, I almost, I thought we were gonna get out of here.
That's important. It's important for us. May 21st. Lee, quick overview of the budget?
Tonight is actually, um, it's a technical term. It is called a budget hearing, um, and it's interesting because we have already adopted our budget. We adopted it at our last meeting. But that is, is a term that comes from the state and, um, it is mandated that we call it that for this evening.
That's correct. And we have to, um, provide the public with a hearing on the, on the budget that the Board of Education has adopted. So just to quickly go through the presentation that we have gone through several times in the past, there have been no changes since the board's adopted budget at the last meeting. You can find this presentation on the website if you'd like to read it in depth. We go through the tax cap calculation that's required by the state. It's known as a two percent tax cap, although we do get a growth factor. Um, so when we combine those two factors together, we find that we have a 2.55% possible growth in our budget. But then there are some things that we have to take in and out, and we, um, at the end of the day, have a 2.22% that we are allowed by the state in order to be compliant with the New York State tax cap. As we go, and that's the calculation that we do to come down to the 2.22%, and that's all, um, lines that are provided by the Office of the State Controller. In order to be compliant, we have to be under that 2.22% or exactly on it in order for our community to receive the property tax credit relief and, uh, this proposed budget is compliant. This is a recap of the initial expenditure budget. It shows an increase from prior year of 4.29% for expenditures. Uh, there are various categories that are broken down into more detail. You can find those categories on the website in more detail, but that's an overview of where the changes are of our previous, this year's budget to the previous year's budget. It's an increase of 1.457 million dollars. Uh, the main budget drivers we went through in the past are some expenditure increases as well as some revenue increases that we have been able to, um, put into the budget. State aid's going up a hundred and six thousand dollars, and we've seen some other, uh, revenue increases in various other places, as well as our tax levy increase as per the tax cap. Our revenue budget is shown here as well, and it balances so that, as required by state law, um, it increases 1.45 million as well. In order to balance the budget, um, the Board of Education has, um, approved our recommendation of appropriating 1.8 million dollars approximately in fund balance. Um, and that's the budget gap that we would've had without the appropriation of fund balance, 1.809. Um, and that does close the budget gap. We proposed taking it from two places, 1.709 from the fund balance reserve as well as 100,000 from the ERS reserve, and that will balance the budget. Again, there's more information on the reserves and our history of our reserves as well. Uh, what we don't know for next year is how many tax certiori positions, petitions we will receive, as well as any other changes that may require any considerations for staffing levels that may happen in the very near term. We'll have to monitor those as well. Here's a history of our tax levy and our tax, and our budget. As you can see, our five-year average for our tax levy has, uh, been 1.61% under that two percent tax cap. It's varied year to year. Our budget, our five-year average budget is 2.32% average increase. And graphically, when you take a look at the budget and the tax levy, um, which are the bars on the graph, uh, the, the bar on the left is the budget percentage change, the bar on the right is the tax levy percentage change. You can see how they have followed the enrollment increase, which is the line on the top of the, of the bar graph. And as you can see, some years when our enrollment was increasing rapidly, our budget and tax levy did not, but there seems to have been some catch-up in the last few years. Important dates to remember, the, tonight is the public hearing on our adopted budget, and then next Tuesday night, May, next Tuesday all day, May 21st, is the budget vote and the trustee election. I should note that our budget newsletter is being mailed out today. My understanding is it was received by the bulk mail sector at White Plains Bulk Mail. It should be going out, so you should be looking for our budget newsletter in your mailbox any day now, depending on.
It's been received.
It was already received.
Yes.
So even better. For any reason, if you do not receive it, feel free. We have extra copies in the district, and we can get them out to you, but you should have received those starting today. And again, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM next Tuesday, May 21st, please come out to vote in the two different budget districts that we have now, District A and District B. If you have any questions as to where you should be voting, please feel free to call the district office, and we can provide you with that information. And that is it.
Thank you, Lee. And yes, of course, the most important topic for the evening because it is our budget vote, which is up on May 21st. I want to thank you, Lee, for all the hard work that went into that. I know it was a lot, and you were short-staffed this year, so thank you for that. And I do really want to, again, thank the students and the teachers who came out tonight to show us what's going on in our schools, because I think that is the best message we could send our community this time of year and to gain their support on May 21st. And does anyone have anything else to add? No. Okay. So we will see you back on May 21st is our next meeting.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, May 21st. It's a Tuesday, actually. Tuesday, May 21st. Thank you.[1787.66][1787.66]